Good evening, everyone. I see that everybody has made it through the vacation and we're back at the same place again. And would everybody look and review the tonight's agenda? Review and then if the agenda looks okay, I'll entertain motions to -- yes, yes, Jean.
I'll entertain.
You moved or accept the agenda as it is. Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Thank you very much, Sherri. All those in favor? And that motion pass. Now, the minutes have been brought in and have been in your mail that you received. If you want to look at those just quickly. I would also like a motion on that when you feel you're ready. We have Jean.
We can't vote for them.
Yes. Jean is moving to accept. And is there a second to that? Thank you, Jen. And anyone who's not here doesn't need to vote on that, but all those in favor of accepting the -- that's accepted. That's terrific. That passes. We now have comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes are allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. Is there anyone who would like to speak this evening? There being no one who wants to speak this evening? No comments from the public? We'll look at the reports and recognition and a facilities update from Ms. Harris.
Well, it has been one heck of a busy week. What I've provided to you is a listing in black and white of all the different projects that have been accomplished over this past week. And then I also included what you've seen before. Back in February, I had given you a project update. This was the capital nonrecurring money. And in bold, some of the same projects that you see, and then I'll go over in just a quick, quick fashion. In bold, I've updated as of April 13th, these have been completed yet. I don't have, I didn't have time to give you the purchase order numbers since I didn't get back to my office until everybody was gone. So, sorry about that. So, again, Bob Willoughby, with the assistance of John Perna, just worked wonders. And the setup of accomplishing all of these different projects were weeks in the making, if not in some instances, months in the making. You can see that at East Elementary, CO2 control sensors were installed. They had been pending as of February. Saks Middle School, as you all know, we had some power issues at Saks. The main switchgear was repaired to the point where we could open school again, but we had no exterior lights in the parking lots. So, Brian had to again curtail outside activities. So, we had a power shutdown for better than four hours last Friday, working with what used to be CLMP and now is Eversource, along with getting replacement for the last main breaker, as well as some of the back order parts for the main switchgear. So, that is all taken care of. We have lights. We may not have cameras or action, but we've got lights. In terms of staying with Saks, we had three chairs in the auditorium cleaned, tested, then removed from the auditorium so that we could, so that the committee could have those three chairs reupholstered to see if the recycling of those chairs might be one of the options for the Saks auditorium. And so, it's well worth trying out, again, being a green community. And since these are retro chairs, if it works, it will be a home run. We also had the ceramics room floor and all items touching the floor cleaned. All were tested and that allows the teacher to remove some of the items that they had not had access to for months now. So, again, this will meet some of the educational needs. The room is not open, but at least we can take some of the items, student projects and those types of things, out of the room. Also, the rooftop air handler was installed over the break. So, again, as you know, we purchased a new rooftop air handler. We did not have it commissioned until the spring because having it commissioned in the fall seemed like not a wise move. So, once you have it commissioned, your warranty begins. So, we waited till the air conditioning season. South School, we had Nyrum working very diligently on the bus loop. The glass block was removed, cleaned, tested, approved, and boarded up. Also, the gymnasium glass block was removed, cleaned, tested, approved, and boarded up. They determined that there was simply not enough time to also do the cafeteria, so it's going to be waiting till the summertime. The control valves that, again, were part of our energy conservation, and the town will receive energy refunds from CLMP/ Eversource. So, the control valves at all three elementary schools and the at Saks were installed this week. So, they will begin processing for that reimbursement. Along with, by the way, the finishing, the rooftop air handler is again part of that energy conservation, as are the CO2 control sensors, because that will control the amount of air coming in and based on demand need. Painting, East and South had a lot of painting going on last week as well. You can see that the corridors, cafeteria, and gymnasium were taken care of at East. And the new wing corridors and some of the classrooms were done at South, staying away from all of the older part of the building. West, as you know, we shut, the superintendent shut that building down on Thursday, April 2nd. Fortunately, it was not a student day. It was a professional development day.
No, we closed on Wednesday.
Wednesday?
Which was a student day.
Ah, okay. It turned out to be...
How about if I give just a little bit of information about that? Okay. So, as you know, we close on Wednesday, so our students and parents over at West got an extra day added to their spring break. The, what we did, and Nancy can get into the specifics about cleaning, but essentially, since we do 182 school days, the students over at West will not have to make up that day because they'll be doing 181 as we go through the year instead of 182. 180 is the minimum. Our staff on that day came actually right over to the high school. They, we set up tables, they worked at grade levels and did other types of things and really sort of took advantage of the opportunity to do some professional learning. And Jan Murphy and Ashley Fornari, the principal and assistant principal there, really jumped right in with the coordinators and others, and Dr. Carenti, of course, to schedule that time out and make a, make meaningful use of the day. So, although we had to cancel the day, it was, it was salvaged as much as it could be with, with our staff and with, you know, our faculty and everybody. And the students over at West get to do 181 days instead of 182. Yep.
And it turned out to be groundwater intrusion, which we're seeing a lot of over there. All the tunnels were cleaned and air dryers operated all week. We had brought in Amy Valencourt from Ty and Bond to make sure that it was all done properly. We hired an outside cleaning firm to make sure that no mold, mildew, or anything else could, could be part of that. And so, it was all done under Amy's supervision. They have installed a sump pump in the lowest point of the tunnels. They also rerouted some gutters, downspouts, to try and push some water away from the foundation. And we'll take a wait and see because the groundwater there is incredibly high. And as a matter of fact, in the gymnasium, we hired Nyrum to do four core samples. As you know, we received funding to replace the gymnasium floor, which has delaminated from the cement slab. Before we began anything, Bob wanted to make sure that there were no potentially hazardous materials. So, Nyrum did the core samples, turned them over to Ty and Bond. We have not yet gotten the results of those. However, it's interesting that the groundwater filled all of those core sample holes. And so, Bob is going to have to bring in an engineer to take a look at it, because that's at the high point of the school grounds. So, we do have some concerns and we'll report back to you at a future date, once we find out what's going on. And then the cafeteria stage was refinished. The high school, the proximity reader locks were installed this morning. They were just having a little bit of a problem with the front door, but most of the other doors were all fully operational. And the energy management demand meter was installed over, over the break as well. That should help us in our electrical bills next year. When you have a school opening up and all of its equipment goes on all at once, it draws incredibly, and that sets the rate for the entire year. So, having a demand meter and staggering all of the startups will help us to manage that. So, again, that was part of our energy conservation funds that the town provided to us. And then, what a wonderful spring surprise, DPW swept all of our parking lots and they contracted with an outside vendor to trim all the trees. So, it has been one heck of a busy week. And kudos go out to Bob Willoughby, John Perna, and the entire facilities and maintenance staff. They did a lot of cleaning here and at all of the schools, too. So, lot going on.
Ms. Harris, thank you very much for bringing us up to date on all those things. And we echo your thanks to the grounds department and Bob Willoughby and to all the people that have helped to make that possible. So, thank you. Does anyone have any questions about that? I think we've learned a lot in the last few minutes, so thank you. Also, I get our superintendent helped in West School when they had their problems with the water, too. So, thank you for pitching in there. That was...
Again, my, my role was cheerleader more than anything else. Happy to be there.
That's terrific. Moving on to our next item, the policy revision update. Mr. Goodman, who brings it to date.
Am I on? As you probably are aware, we looked at the approaches for policy update from Shipman and Goodwin, as well as CAPE. And we, at this point, believe we will be going with CAPE. There are three primary factors. One is cost. They are less. Another one is that not only is their cost less, but their approach is such that it's almost like a turnkey operation. They will revise all of our policies and they will give us three chances to edit them, all at a fixed rate. This includes our special policies, which are unique to New Canaan as well. The other factor in CAPE's selection is that their approach also effectively is less for both. If you recall, when we reviewed the health policy and medication policies, all for statutory purposes, as well as the cyberbullying and bullying policies, they get very long, very bureaucratic pages and pages of detail. And to have a policy which meets the statutory requirements and yet is maybe 30 to 40 to 50 percent less bulky is deemed an advantage, just to be able to read it quicker and not have to wade through as much material, and yet it's saying the same thing. So, those are the factors. Now, what are we doing now? Well, we're going to take a dual approach as discussed last time. And one is to turn our policies over in piecemeal to CAPE. They will review them, bring them to statutory requirements, et cetera. We'll have the opportunity to review and edit them. That's just kind of standard stuff. Then the other, and that's going to take one to two years probably. And the other part of the dual approach is to take, again, our higher priority policies that we jointly with the administration feel have fallen behind. These are the ones, by the way, which do reflect local community values and needs. And to work upon, on them ourselves, and then when we get them to where we think they reflect our values, submit them back to CAPE as well for the statutory requirements approval. And along that line, we have already met with the resources committee to look at the policy regarding facilities. And we're, in fact, we're meeting again tomorrow on this. And the objective here is to bring that policy up to speed, at least in terms of reflecting our own needs, of which you're well aware of the problems we've had with that, to have that brought forward to the board and approved by the end of this June. So, that's kind of what we're planning to do and what we are doing. And any questions, I'd be glad to try and respond to.
Who at CAPE is, works on the policies?
Vin, what's his name, Astero?
Mustaro. M-U-S. He's a retired superintendent.
Yes.
In Connecticut.
And he's been doing this for quite a while now, and he's working with quite a number of districts, effectively doing this same effort, just bringing their policies up to statutory requirements.
Okay. And does he work with Patrice? Isn't she at CAPE? The lawyer?
Yeah.
Yeah, Jen.
Vin, and he performed an audit for us about four years ago on our policies. So, he's coming at it with a little bit of background information as well, as far as where we stand. He's been doing this for numerous districts throughout the state for, for a while now, with a, with a small staff.
Great.
Yes, Sherri.
All right. I think that sounds like a great approach. I was just wondering if, other than the facilities policy, if you've identified any other policies to be prioritized? For example, I know that we had a recent board discussion on the athletic funding and relooking that specific policy. And I'm just wondering if, you know, are we going to, you said there's going to be a prioritization, and if so, can we review the list of policies that are being prioritized or, and/or give input into that prioritized list?
We certainly could. I think right now we're focusing on facilities and it's, it's true, we, it might be a good idea for us, me, whatever, working with the administration to, in fact, ask them, what other policies do you have, so that we don't just do the next one, but we have some idea of how many there are that are some quote, "a higher priority" and what kind of efforts required to do that. So, I take that suggestion very positively. Thank you.
Yep. And one of the, the things that I liked about their process as they go through it is they'll do it a series at a time. So, they start with the 1000s and sort of work through those back and forth, and then the twos and the threes. And we can always submit others that are out of sequence to say, "These are high priority and we'd like to focus on them." But it was a very organized approach that they've developed through the last X number of years of doing this with other districts, how they've found it to be most successful.
And there was another point just came to mind, and I have to confirm this, that part of the struggle has been to, what do you do with the, the unique policies? And when both services have an update program, as new statutory requirements are developed up in Hartford, they will then reissue their policies involving those statutory requirements. But the question came up, well, what about those policies which mix statutory requirements with New Canaan's unique needs or perceived to be unique requirements? And my last conversation with CAPE was that just, they will just take those policies and they will, even though they're unique, they will go through them and update them with, with their fixed update service costs.
Right. Because part of this service is also renumbering the policies so that they're aligned with CAPE and with the majority of other policy manuals throughout the state. So, when they come out with a revised policy, the number will align with our, our similar policy and it'll be easier to keep it up to date.
Yes, and to, and to be clear again, both CAPE and Shipman and Goodwin do have update services for a nominal fee that they will, on a continuing basis, update your policies. But the question again of the unique policies commingled with the statutory ones, again, was, in my opinion, tipped us towards CAPE in that regard.
Hearing the various pros and cons of it, I appreciate very much, Jean, the work you've done on this, because I think it's something that all of us want to get caught up on. And so, appreciate that and appreciate your meeting also with the CAPE person and, and us keeping up with what's happening with CAPE. I think it makes sense. Any other questions? Anyone has? Yes.
Just quickly, Jean, how does the, the update and alignment of the administrative regs fit into the process of updating the policies?
You say the administrative rights?
regs, the regulations that we have.
The regulations are typically written by the district, although both CAPE and the other firm do have a number of regula, suggested regulations that they are offering, along with their other actual policy reviews. But that's a good area that is probably more to us to do, except in those areas where, again, they offer that, those particular regulations.
So, in terms of pacing that, because by us updating our policies, we're creating more work for the administration, which is all necessary work, I think, but...
That was an interesting area of conversation. For instance, one group suggested probably rightly so, put more in the regs and not in the policy, so that you don't have to update the policy as often. That the regs, that the statutory requirements can and oftentimes are more adequately addressed in the regs than in the policy, which brings up an interesting question. It's also pointed out in many cases that people just know the regs, that you don't have to always update them, which might seem a little odd, but they gave me certain examples of this. So, where they were really saying, in some cases, it's not necessary to write the policy. Your staff will know the policy. This brings up question of judgment. Do they know the policy? When is it necessary? When is it not necessary? I can't fully answer this without going through more. A lot of this is going to be, well, I shouldn't say a lot of it, some of this is going to be, let's feel our way through this process. And I suspect some of this is reflected in the current regs and policy already.
So, does CAPE, as they're reviewing our policies, are they also reviewing our administrative regs? Or is that something we have to do independently?
I think that's something we have to ask CAPE. I don't think we, good point, like Sherri brought up a good point, that's a good point, too, that was not asked.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I'll make a note.
Any other questions about that process? Again, thank you, Jean, for your work on that.
Thank you for your suggestions.
Moving on to the next item on tonight's agenda, that we have the 2015-16 budget update. Dr. Litsch.
Sure. And I just wanted to take a moment tonight to give a quick update on where we are, so that as we prepare to go into our discussions over the next couple of weeks and determine sort of where changes to the budget need to occur and adjustments that need to be made as a result of the process. But I thought tonight's not, not the night for us to have a long discussion about those ins and outs, because we've just had spring break last week and haven't had a chance to, to pull the administrative team together since the decision was made last Wednesday. But for the next meeting, we'll be able to talk, I think, in greater detail. But just to give one or two quick pieces of information out, so that, again, we're on the same page with it. We began our budget process this year after working, you know, November, December, developing together. The proposed budget was for $84,809,121. The, ultimately, the budget that was approved on Wednesday night on April 1st was for $83,300,121. The approved budget is a 2.79 percent increase year over year. But the reductions from our proposed to the approved, the reductions in the, you know, the increase, was the $1.1 million use of the insurance reserves to cover that cost. As you remember, the initial budget of $84.8 million had fully funded the insurance at $11.6 million for next year's anticipated claims, where we had budgeted the $10 million, so the $1.1 from the reserves. The $80,000 that was in for transportation and for pool rental cost for our athletic team, in case we would need that with the YMCA, in the meeting with the Board of Finance, they said they would move that to town contingency and that it would come out of our budget. So, that was moved out. There was $59,000 worth of project work that we had, they called project work, and it was things like ADA handrails and things like that, that was moved out of the operating budget into the capital budget. There was a $30,000 reduction that was an increase in our budget, where we're looking to pick up some more office space over at 39 Locust Ave. And then $340,000 reduction from, it was $240,000 in the Board of Finance and $100,000 at the Town Council. And that was, I'm just tagging that as general, because there was not necessarily an account that was tagged to, although Board of Finance did talk a little bit about the salary line. So, the overall reduction from our original proposal is $1,609,000. But again, $1.1 million of that is from the, the use of the insurance money. The, the 2.79 percent increase year over year doesn't, does still include $500,000 of insurance money, $600,000 in excess cost money, because remember, we are moving from the net budget that we have this year to a gross budget next year, and we'll do that going forward. $150,000 in electricity and then about $54,000 in transportation. So, over the next couple of weeks, I'll be working with the administrative team and others to develop some scenarios and to make some decisions around, that we can then share at the next board meeting around kind of what we, how we manage the, you know, the remainder and make some adjustments to the budget going forward. But I just wanted to take a quick minute to just touch base on the numbers, to be sure we're all on the same page. And to say thank you. You know, this is, as a first budget season for me in this seat, going through it, it was wonderful to have the support and to have, you know, so many people, so many board members, so many administrators, so many others, present at the meetings and available and answering questions and truly, I mean, available sometimes on an hour's notice to sit down and brainstorm or problem solve or try to work some things through. And I definitely, I want to also say a special thank you to Ms. Harris, who is now in the home stretch of finishing off her final budget. But to say really, you know, going through all of this, it was certainly very important for me and for all of us to have Nancy as involved as she was, spearheading the whole, all of the work and the project and seeing it all through. And boy, it certainly comes with some great confidence to have Nancy sitting at your right-hand side when, when we're talking with the boards and doing this work. So, thank you, Nancy. And that's, I'd say, a brief update and more to come.
Boy, any questions about that? Yes, Penny?
Just with, I mean, in terms of like the way the reductions for the $1.6 million are allocated, it's up to the Board of Ed how to put that. We can take, it was $1.1 million suggested by the town bodies on the insurance. Right. I just wanted to clarify that.
Correct.
It's never a line-by-line reduction by them. Those are just initial allocations you're recommending.
Right. That was just sharing the rationale that they gave for those cuts.
Right.
As they went through, right. And I want to say, into those reductions in the proposal.
Right. So, I guess the only thing, I guess, that I understand is if you could, when it becomes clear, if you could update us also on the negotiations with the town with respect to the insurance reserve policy, the 60-40, because I understand that policy's being looked at and some adjustments are going to have to be made to that this summer with the $1.1 million out to put us into compliance, back into compliance with that policy, just to make certain all of that is, you know, moving apace.
Yes. Yep, and that'll be part of our discussion next week as well. We have to have a few more discussions. I don't think anyone really had an appetite for it in the last week, and maybe me least of all. So, as we get back into it all in the next couple, we'll have some more information.
That's great. Thank you so much for the update.
I would add, thank you also to the board and all the support that they showed up and came and did all sorts of things, that committee meetings and variety of things, communications, and it was really appreciated. Everybody participated. And congratulations on your first budget getting through.
Thank you.
Any other questions about that? Yes, Allison?
Actually, I don't have any questions.
Actually, I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to state, I was not unable to make the Town Council meeting, unfortunately. I was out of town. But I just wanted to state my disappointment in finding out about that $100,000 that was cut at the last minute and the fact that it was basically a random cut to either a meter percentage or to fulfill an obligation or whatever it was for. But in my 12 years on the board, that's unprecedented. And I think it's very disappointing and discouraging as a board to go through this process month, month after month after month and to have people like Nancy and her crew and Brian and the board and everybody sitting down and working so diligently to present a transparent line-by-line budget and to have discussions about it through the Board of Selectmen and through the Board of Finance and have this thing really kind of ripped apart and looked at in detail, which is a really important and necessary part of the process, to reach the Town Council, to answer all their questions, and then to get to the very end and just have $100,000 lopped off the top of the budget. And I just found that very disconcerting as a board member and very frustrating, quite frankly. And I think it's very difficult as a board member for us to go through the process that we do to the level of detail that we do with the thoughtfulness that we do and try to be as transparent as possible, which is asked for and is delivered and is what we all want, obviously, get to that point and just have a random number, it seemed like, pulled out of the sky to say, you know, we're just going to take $100,000 off and to Penny's point, and you guys just have to find it someplace. So I hope this isn't, I hope we're not setting precedent here. I hope this is not going to be something the board's going to have to go through because it is, it's going to have to be a consideration, obviously, in terms of the process of budgeting for the board. But I just want to applaud Mr. Engel and Mr. Moynihan and Ms. Murphy for voting against the budget and protested that as Town Council members because I know they-
Ms. Tucker.
And Mr. Emmert, I'm sorry, Mr. Emmert also. So for have four Town Council members vote against it kind of in protest of that, I think is greatly appreciated, certainly by me as a board member and I'm sure by all board members. So I'm hoping that next year, we'll be able to have a discussion about that before we go through the process to just make sure we're all on the same page. Again, I harp on this a little bit, but we all talk about transparency, but we actually have to deliver on it. So if we're going to talk about it between boards and committees and councils, then we all should be acting the appropriate way too. So I again applaud Nancy and your crew and Brian and everyone else who's worked so hard on this budget because it's a, it's a very difficult process to go through, a very necessary process, but difficult process. And again, to have something like that kind of be the end result, I personally found very frustrating, so.
I'd like to say, I believe also that Mr. Campbell also did not support the cut.
No, he did.
Oh, he did support the cut?
He did.
I'm sorry.
Ken Campbell?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo that, and I wasn't quite sure whether to bring up that comment right now or when we actually, we're going to discuss and we have the full budget, you know, the next time. But I agree, you know, sitting there, it was very disappointing to understand and I think the points are brought up by those four council members that voted against it were very poignant in that saying that, you know, there should be a reason why, you know, we work so hard, we have our administrators take a lot of time away from what the job that they really need to be spending time to do to formulate these budgets and be able to be available to answer their questions. And at the end of the day, if there's not really a reason why we're doing this, it's just that we're coming to our number, I think there's time better spent elsewhere than if that's going to be the end result.
Disappointment to all of us, obviously.
Which is a problem with the process as well. When the Town Council has only the ability to cut the budget, not add to it, and they are the last resort, and it's come down and everybody's taking their hack at it, and they get down to the Town Council, they can either pass it or cut it. And I think that over the years, they've, they've sort of argued a little bit and then passed the budget. And I can sort of understand a little bit why they feel, you know, almost neutered by the process, that by the time it gets to them, it's been cut so much that, you know, their input seems to have been lessened. So the only thing they can do is make an arbitrary cut because that's all that's left. So maybe the town needs to look at the process as well so that it doesn't get down to the Town Council by the time it's been so badly pared back already that they've got nothing left to do.
Some communication perhaps between the different boards so that they feel as if they've also had a part in looking at the budget.
In beating us up, yeah.
Yes, sure.
Just to add to Scott's point and kind of reflecting on the budget process, I had several parents actually ask me about the discussion at the last Town Council meeting about the budgeting process being based on the projected tax rate, which is so far off from the actual historical tax rate. And I actually had parents ask me, you know, since, you know, the budgeted tax rate is 98% collect versus an actual historical, which is closer to 99.5, which is a material difference of 1.9 million, can't we use that difference to fund, you know, this $100,000 that was kind of randomly cut at the end of the process? I'm just reflecting this because I had parents emailing me, asking me this question, trying to understand that point. So I would just urge the town funding bodies to look more closely at their budgeting assumptions going forward.
I think the Audit Committee has asked some questions about that also, and I think that was discussed by the, asked by the Town Council, but they opted to leave it, I think, the way it was. But it was part of the discussion that they had too. Good question. Yes.
Just to maybe help respond to parents a little, because it is a very unusual process. While they budget collect, collect at 98.5% and we collect at 99.4, they actually, this year, for the general fund, transferred $2 million of that, you know, net extra back into the budget to offset the tax collection or the taxable rate to the citizens, which I think is a very unusual practice, I guess, and maybe we need, I agree, I think we need to kind of, to look at sort of if we're being asked to be extremely transparent about where every dollar is going, I think we need to expect the same thing elsewhere in our government bodies. And I, and I also agree in the, in sort of the process, looking at it, you know, it's been sort of a hot-button issue of mine is that, you know, the one elected body that deals with our budget has no ability to add to it, but the unelected body can add or, you know, take away from our budget. And I think, you know, there have been calls to look at the charter and the town, and I think, you know, maybe people need to be starting to talk about that a little bit more because, you know, really, the voters don't, you know, the Town Council really only has one option and they're the only elected body, so.
Right. It's an option they can only exercise after everybody else has done the same thing first.
Yes. And the revision of the charter might rectify some of those problems. Allison?
I just want to say that I think it's important, though, that the Town Council did have the opportunity and did take advantage of the opportunity to send us a list of questions that they had with regard to the budget, and they were answered in detail, and then Dr. Lutze went over them at the presentation. So I would, just to piggyback on what Scott was saying a little bit, I think it is a little bit of a frustrating process for them because they want to make their mark. But I think they do make their mark by asking the questions and getting to dig into different issues and maybe the Board of Finance did or digging at a different level or whatever. But I would be concerned if, in fact, the Town Council felt like regardless they were going to have to cut something because that's all they could do to put their own personal stamp on the budget. Or if they do, they need to talk to the Board of Finance to basically say, leave us a little something to talk about, you know, when it comes to our meetings because I think if that, in fact, is going to be the process moving forward, which hopefully it won't be, this is hopefully a one-time deal, but if that's going to be the process, then I'm very concerned about, I'm very concerned about that. If there's going to be a need to just cut to cut, again, to put their personal stamp on it, then that's something that we need to talk about in the process. And hopefully, maybe next October, September, or something like that, before we really start the budget process, that these bodies can sit down and have a discussion about it and kind of, you know, debrief over what happened this year. And maybe we can all put our input in and improve the budget process for next year.
We look forward to hearing more from you and from the administration about the cuts and where they're going to be. Oh, sorry, Penny.
Just, just one point of clarification. The town bodies did several years ago increase the budgeting rate from 98% to 98.5%. So I know it's something that they-
Just last year.
Yeah, look for every year. And the only thing I'd say about that is that to the extent that gives them flexibility, you know, we ask for flexibility in our budget as well because there are always, in a budget as large as the Board of Ed, there are unintended costs that come forward, and I think that gives them some flexibility with respect to unintended costs that come forward. So anyhow, it is something that may be worthy of further discussion, but I just wanted to make that one point.
Any others? Allison?
Just wanted to mention that somebody much wiser than me in the past said something one time, we were talking about taxes and basically said, I don't think there are too many young families that are moving into New Canaan for low taxes. You know, they're moving into New Canaan because of the value of their taxes, what their taxes buy them. And I think sometimes we need to, we obviously have people, you know, I know it's a stretch for many, many people, and we're all taxpayers on this board, so we're all very aware of taxes. But I think we need to remind, it's not necessarily just the lowest tax rate sometime, it's what we're actually getting for our money, that's important. And sometimes I think the focus is just on the actual percentage or on the rate. So we need to remember that, I think, in time too, that most people aren't moving to New Canaan to, for low taxes.
And I'll say for the millionth time, from what we understand from the brokers, the number one reason that they move here is because of the schools. So we do want to keep protecting that very valuable service that's provided. Moving on? Okay. Next, we have an action item which is very important to our seniors and particularly to their families as they're looking forward to after 12, 13 years, maybe longer, that they are planning to have their graduation. And so they are eagerly awaiting to find out the dates, and I'm sure relatives are planning to make accommodations or come, and we look forward to that. And we need to, Dr. Lutze, would you like to explain it to us so that we are sure to make it?
Sure. Should we have a motion?
Sure, we can start with a motion. Is there a motion about, we have a motion there that's right there. Sangi, did you want to read that?
Sure. I moved to approve June 18, 2015 as the graduation date for New Canaan High School with the rain date of June 19, 2015. And the last day of the 2014-15 school year would be June 19, 2015.
Terrific. So that just been moved? And is there a second? Thank you, Sherry. And now, would you like to discuss?
I'd love to. Connecticut State law allows us to set the graduation date anytime from April 1st on. So this is our first meeting together in order to do that. The advantage of doing it now is if something were to happen, and we have had storms in June before and things like that, although we're certainly exactly crossing our fingers, the date is set and we wouldn't have to move it. So once the Board of Ed, after April 1st sets it, the date stays. And this would have our students graduating on the 181st day because, again, we do 182. And then our last day at the high school, and actually, the last day throughout the district is a half day. We go through an exam review day. So it's 5:00 on Dunning Stadium that we typically, we have our graduation ceremony. I think it is one of, if not the very nicest graduation ceremony for a high school you're ever going to find. Typically, the sun is setting over the bleachers in the back. It's hot.
Very warm, very warm.
But it's an absolutely wonderful evening. And I think that everyone involved, from, you know, Tony and our video crew here to, you know, our staff and our speakers, everyone does a wonderful job. So hopefully, everyone can come out and join us on that night, and we'll hope for an 85, with 85 degrees with a slight breeze on June 18.
We have a motion on the floor? Any more discussion?
Yeah, just a quick point. If we're going to say in the, in the motion that the last day of the school year will be June 19, don't we need a caveat that assuming that there's no cancellation of school between now and then or, because if we, if we pass this, we either need to, if we need another day, we need to go back and amend it or we need to-
Right. So actually, the, the motion could, we could amend the motion to drop that last part off.
Yeah, that's what I would do.
Okay. So we have an amendment to the-
Sure.
-motion, and I think probably we have to vote first on the amendment. Was there a second, first of all, on the amendment?
Second.
Thank you, Penny. Second on the amendment to take that part out. And then we need a, is there more discussion before we vote? Yes.
Just a point of clarification. I thought that the last day couldn't be passed, the third week in June. So the 19th would be the third week in June, so it happens to be-
Well, that's, so it's, well, actually, it's the Board of Education policy. Right. So, but by Connecticut State law, we are required to do 180 days, so that would trump local policy.
Okay.
So essentially, what happens at this point is, since we have 182 days in our schedule, if for some reason we had to have a closing that we didn't anticipate, I would come back to you most likely with the recommendation that we'd go from 182 to 181. If we had something that kept us out for two days, I would do the same thing and say, we would talk about going to 180 student days and still doing 185 with our staff. However, if we had to close for three days, then we would come back and talk about adjusting our policy, the Board of Education policy, because the Connecticut statutes do require 180 as a minimum. So that's the long explanation, how it also breaks out, but that's, I think, I would say Scott is absolutely right. There's no reason for it to be in the motion. The motion is to set, set our graduation date, and if anything unexpected like that were to happen, we'd know about it well in advance before the end of the school year as far as those closings. I will say this, though, after we set the graduation date for people who buy plane tickets or are traveling in, even if that were to happen and we had to close our school for a week because of something which we do not anticipate having to do, we could, we would still hold graduation on June 18. And then Connecticut law just requires us to invite our seniors to come back after graduation to give them the opportunity to meet 180 school days. So we would be inviting all of our seniors to come back if that were the case, but we would not have to move that date.
So we're discussing right now, just a little review, the amendment. And so first, we need, is there any more discussion on the amendment? If there's no more discussion, then we vote on that. All those in favor of the amendment? That's universal, everybody has said yes, and no, nobody opposing it. So now we'll go back and vote on the original motion. And we have it seconded, and so we just need to vote on that. And all those in favor signify by raising your hands. And that's unanimous also. So that motion passes, and we certainly wish our seniors a wonderful ending to the school year as they get ready to go into that.
And it will go quickly.
Yes, it will go quickly.
And we have over 80 students on senior internships this year.
Oh, that'll be terrific.
We'll get an update about that as we go further into the spring, but for those students, they're down in just a couple of weeks.
It's a highlight.
Yeah.
Now, equipment donation to Danbury Schools. We have here a motion, and it has to approve the donation. And would someone like to read the motion, and then we'll do a second to it and then have discussion? Or do you want more discussion before or?
We just learn about it before the motion?
I think maybe-
I'd like to know more about it before I move the motion.
Can you bring us up to date?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
After we see on that, and then we'll do a motion.
And certainly, Dr. Krentz or Nancy Harris are certainly welcome to join me as well. But we had this request because we have some equipment in our science department that we're no longer using. Essentially, for us, given our curriculum and given the equipment that we currently have, this is, it's not required. We've changed our curriculum and we've purchased new equipment that's more relevant to the work that we, that we have, the work that we're doing. So essentially, it's sitting on a shelf, it's not being used. And so we contacted, Melinda contacted some other area coordinators, said, could anybody use this versus sort of letting it age itself out and become antiquated without somebody using it? Our curriculum, right now, as it's written in science and the, all the equipment we have, is appropriately matched, and this is equipment that we had prior to doing the most recent revision. So we have it, we don't, we don't use it, we don't need it. The, we've replaced it with more updated equipment for our students, and Danbury Public Schools could use it. They would, and they would use it right away with their students. So instead of, again, having it sit on the shelf until it's no good for anybody, we thought that it would be a worthwhile investment for us to make this donation for them.
Does anybody have any questions?
Brian, I did want to just add that the equipment has been in existence since 2006. So we certainly have gotten our use out of the equipment, and the new equipment that has come in to replace those probes is aligned with the high school. So our students at Sacks Middle School are using the same equipment that the high school students are using, so it makes for a nice transition.
Yes.
Just one question, and it's more just because I, you know, want to make sure we don't have any liability as related to giving this stuff away. So, I mean, I think it's great, I love the idea of recycling and whatever, but is there any, I mean, do we have any potential liability coming back to us if something happens in Danbury with that equipment?
No. Again, you're, you're literally donating as is for this equipment, and Dr. Ross Valley, who is their science coordinator, and Melinda's been talking with Harry about that and that they are certainly a less affluent district and can use that kind of assistance to bring in more activities in their science department, and I know Melinda can talk to that. But again, we're donating as is. It either works or it doesn't. If it's not working, they can repair it. But for us to either let it sit, age out, and then dispose of it, it's been purged- and then dispose of it, it's been purchased with public dollars, therefore donating to another public school is an appropriate use. You can do that with either local, state, or federally funded equipment, as long as it stays in the public school system.
Other questions? Yes, Scott?
I have a more of a perfunctory question. Melinda, thanks very much, I think it's great you did the work looking for somebody to take it, and I think that to repurpose it and make it still usable is fabulous. Are we not usually, don't we usually make a motion on an action item and then vote on it at the following meeting? Is there a time constraint that makes this important? It's not, it's not that I wouldn't be happy to move it forward today because it's sort of a no-brainer in my mind, but I just don't like the idea of getting away from what is our practice.
Our first read and then, is there a-
But if they were going to take it now, you know?
Yes, Allison, do you want to answer?
Well, just very quick, Scott, that's not, that's not a blanket rule for action items. You know, if you do with policy thing, things such as policy, other things, you would do kind of a first read, and then it would sit for 30 days for feedback and others, but I think there are plenty of action items, like the graduation, other things, that don't sit for a first and second read, so I think it does depend on-
Okay, I mean, like I say, I'm thrilled with the whole idea of it, I just don't want to get away from a process that we, yeah.
Sure.
I think generally, follow-up protocol, sometimes we're looking for input from the community or input from the parent population or something like that, I think we tend to do that, to give them the opportunity. I just wanted to say, I applaud you, this is wonderful, I think this is fabulous that you did this, I appreciate you going above and beyond to look for a home for this, and I'm really pleased to hear 2006, because of course, my first thought was, how old is this equipment? And so it's wonderful to hear that we were able to get, you know, a life out of this equipment, and now somebody else is going to be able to use this. So thank you very much for going out, and I hope we'll see more of this, quite frankly, because we're very fortunate as a community, so I would love to see us be able to, other communities benefit from our resources also like this, so, thank you.
Well, most likely, we will be coming back with a possible textbook donation, so we do have some textbooks that are outdated, but there's been some social media out there with people that have requested the use of these textbooks, so we most likely are investigating that now, and we'll be coming forward with another possible donation to a less fortunate or district that could really use them.
That's wonderful.
Okay, any other questions about this? No other questions? Would someone like to read the motion? Penny, thank you.
Motion to approve the donation of Vernier Pro Boire, consisting of eight motion sensors and cables, 24 LabPros and cables, and four CBL II and cables to the Danbury Public Schools.
Thank you. Is there a second? Deanna, thank you. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hands, and that's unanimous with the group. We're now down to the consent agenda, which is to move and record various retirements, and can I have a motion after everybody's looked at those? Deanna?
I moved to approve the consent agenda items.
Okay, is there a second? Thank you, Scott. All those in favor, raise hands, thank you. Again, unanimous? Announcements in future meetings.
Sure. So on our April 27th agenda, we have a couple of proposed items here. One will be an update from the Saks Building Committee, and the, in the Friday notes that you had, there was a few paragraphs about that and some of the dates of the meetings. There are a couple of them coming up, which I just wanted to mention, as they are important. There's one tomorrow evening, which is an update by SLAM, who are the architects and the owners' rep, who've been working with the project up to this point, to the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen. That's tomorrow night at 7:30 at the Nature Center. And then on the 16th, there's an update by the Saks Building Committee to the Town Council. As you will remember, this is the second time that the group has gone to those town bodies, and it's just to keep them updated as far as the progress for the committee, where things are, and sort of help to understand where things will be going. At our next Board of Education meeting, we'll have a formal presentation around the different options that the Saks Building Committee has been considering, and the Board of Ed at that point will be asked to help move the project forward, make a decision around the various options and things. And then it will continue forward from there, again, going back to the different town bodies. And you saw, I think in your packet, the presentation that'll be shared tomorrow evening with the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen.
And that will be a first read, that one, when we do it?
That'll definitely be a first read.
And I just wanted to say, for tomorrow night, if people have listened to the prior presentations from SLAM, tomorrow night, they'll be presenting to the Board of Finance because they hadn't heard it before, the work that was done in looking at the first feasibility study, the option one, option two, and they'll also be presenting just the need portion with respect to the benchmarking of Saks Middle School and the additional need for classroom space due to the enrollment increases and the curriculum changes that we've had in the nearly 20 years since that project was designed. So I think it'll be, I think it's a good presentation, and I think they'll be very informative, and they will be obviously bringing that presentation along with the solution. There'll be no solution presented tomorrow night, just a discussion of the need. The solution will be presented to the Board of Ed on April 27th, along with very high-level feasibility drawings and feasibility estimates. So looking forward to that.
Yes. Also, on the 27th, related to Saks, we will be bringing forward the cost estimates for the remediation work that needs to occur this upcoming summer in 2015. So that will come forward at the meeting on the 27th, and then we'll be following a similarly aggressive timeline with each of the town bodies as we look for that money to be appropriated this year so that we can accomplish the work in the auditorium, ceramics room, boiler room, around the remediation that needs to occur.
And to Scott's point, we'll be looking to fast-track a very brief ed spec, which will be the remediation of hazardous materials throughout the Saks Middle School with a budget so that we can bring it forward to the Selectmen, the Board of Finance, and the Town Council, expecting, again, I think the last time I talked about it was somewhere less than $1 million, and right now, I've submitted a preliminary EDO 49 with a tentative budget of $750,000 with an anticipated 20% reimbursement back to the town because it's all code work. So that's kind of where we stand, and I'm hoping that we can do this in one read.
So it's not a first read on, as it reads now?
No, the Saks project is from the Saks Building Committee. The remediation work is a separate project and run separately because of the reimbursement with the state and how that runs. So the remediation piece will come to you separately, and I'm hoping that by the end of this week, maybe next, but hopefully this week, I'll be able to provide you with those numbers so that you know about what that is.
And that's work that needs to be done, no matter what we do to the rest of the project.
Exactly, so this runs independently from the other-
So that shouldn't be too hard to-
The only catch with it is if we were not to do it, then nothing else could occur, and our auditorium would stay closed indefinitely. So we have to do it this summer.
We also have an interesting agenda with the assistive technology.
We do, so Ms. Piacca's been working on a presentation with, around the ways that we use technology with our special education department to help some of our media students. Now, if this, if the agenda looks like it's getting too long, we might move some things around, and that might be at a future meeting, depending upon the Saks Building Committee and how those things are put together, because we'll also have our monthly statement of accounts, will be due at that point. And we're also going, as you know, we're in negotiation season, but it's the appropriate time, I think, for an update from Attorney Balak around our non-certified negotiations that we've been working our way through since the start of the new year. And then at the following meeting in May, Tom Mooney will be joining us to do the same thing in an executive session to begin talking about negotiation strategies with our certified teachers. So there are lots going on.
A lot happening, for sure. Now is our time at the end of the meeting for comments from the public, as with the first, the public has a right to be heard, and the board sets aside time. Two minutes are allotted each speaker and a maximum of 15 to each subject. Is there anyone who would like to speak? There being no one coming forward, we're at a time in the meeting to then adjourn? Is there a motion to adjourn? Sangita?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second. Allison, all those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you very much to everyone.